Jerry. Split the story, hm? Yes. You just beat it? Did you? Huh? Same color?
Oh, you got it.
Ooh, nice.
It really does look like.
Do you pick them out or don't?
I don't think so.
Do you pick out the colors?
Yes, I've been trying to sell Donna this morning.
I don't know what you're saying, man. The address isn't.
So you know the whole house was like a kind of charcoal.
I don't understand that, but it should not be empty, right?
Water cream.
Wait, man, hold on, hold on, hold on.
And then right there.
I got him.
There we go. I'm already getting involved now in three shots.
You're old?
Yeah, yes. All right, and you need to decide. Because I'm hurt.
He's a hostage. He's a cranky Jerry.
I read a book, pretty good, right? Big change.
You look great like that.
It shocked me the first time.
Oh, my gosh.
It was, there was a couple times where I was like, oh, you know, like, I don't know. Oh. So put the shivers on it and everything. Are we at full strength?
Full strength, sorry about that.
Good evening all, and welcome to the November tenth committee of the whole meeting.
Ms. Barrett?
Here.
Jerry Harper?
Here.
Melrose?
Here.
Steve Lake?
Here.
Megan Michael?
Here.
Kathy Knight?
Here.
Tom Adley?
Here. Those who are here, please rise for the quench. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of our government, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jerry, for the echo. Nice touch. Oh, we heard you.
Yeah. And you didn't say it only seven.
Uh, first on the agenda is the citizens' time to speak. Are any citizens here in the auditorium wanting to say anything? Okay, we do have a few emails that were submitted to Citizens to Speak, Jasper12.org. You can always do that if you're unable to attend, and they'll be read from you. The first one, well, I'm going to start bringing my glasses pretty soon. First one is from Christine Lang. Dear School Board, remote learning is not working for so many students. High school students are missing out on a special time in their lives. Think back to your high school days and your memories. Homecoming, football games, clubs, sports, and friends. The mental health of these students is deteriorating. Teenage years are all about socializing with friends, and they're sitting in their rooms behind a screen all day alone. Then they get hours of homework to spend behind the computer screen alone even more. Day after day, the same routine. Class after class on Zoom calls where they're muted listening to the teacher's lecture at them. Not to mention students like my daughter that have learning disabilities are falling further and further behind. Remote learning, excuse me, remote learning is not using best practices, differentiation, teaching using different learning styles, wait time, et cetera. They need to be back in person before it is too late. Teachers are grading, and teaching as normal under these conditions, so many students are in jeopardy of failure. They are suffering academically, socially, and mentally. Please give these kids options and open school back up before it is too late. Uh, the next letter is from Nancy Thompson. Good evening. My name is Nancy Thompson. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the committee of the whole meeting in person this evening. Thank you to the board for reading my comments. We have two boys in the district, a fourth grader at Jess and a seventh grader at the junior high. My husband and I are active members of the community, volunteering countless hours coaching local youth sports, planning class holiday parties, members of PTO and JEPF. My children have embraced e-learning, are engaged, and doing extremely well in this unfortunate learning environment. Their teachers have been incredible, to say the least. Despite their experience thus far, e-learning cannot sustain itself. From the start of the pandemic nine months ago, our family has been and continues to practice good citizenship in helping mitigate the spread of the virus. I am not here to debate the science and the validity of the local health department COVID numbers. We can all agree, as testing increases, positivity rates will follow. It is simple math. It will not be going away anytime soon. I no longer can provide answers to my kids' questions. Why can mom and dad go back to work, but we can't go to school? Why can my friends and neighboring communities go to school, but we can't go to school? Why can my cousins go to school, but we can't go to school? Why are others out and about shopping and traveling, but we can't go back to school? Why are daycare centers open, but we can't to school? Life is happening all around us. Why are we still forced to stay home e-learning? What I take issue with and worries me the most, frankly, keeps me up at night, is the administration and the board's lack of urgency in their approach to return to hybrid learning plan. The superintendent has placed an indefinite suspension on hybrid learning, and to my understanding, will only consider returning when the positivity rate returns to eight percent or less. This is a highly complex situation required, which requires a multi-dimensional approach to, in finding the best solution for returning the kids to school. Relying on metrics only is irresponsible and a disservice to the district families. Why hasn't an updated parent survey been sent out to get a sense of current comfort level in a hybrid plan? According to the remarks by the building principals during the board meeting last month, the teachers were bursting with excitement having the kids back in the building. The district has done an outstanding job implementing several safety measures in the buildings to align with the county health department's recommendations for a safe learning environment for both students and staff. It doesn't add up. The safety measures are in place. The kids want to be in school. The teachers want to be in school. Are there other factors in play going on behind the scenes that the district families are unaware of? Is there a concern of potential teacher union litigation that factors into the administration's indefinite suspension of hybrid learning? Our kids' school experience is being held hostage by something completely out of their control. Our kids' mental stability is being held hostage by something completely out of their control. My children are not responsible for the behavior of those in our community who continue to ignore mitigation efforts in response to this pandemic. How much longer do I have to continue to tell my children, stay the course, be resilient, hang in there? I hold my breath every morning that today is not going to be the day they mentally break down and give up. The burden has reached a point of exhaustion for me, yet, as a parent, it is my unwavering responsibility to advocate for my children. I won't let them fail. No one could have imagined the enormous struggles that the board would be dealing with in 2020. I don't sit in judgment of anyone on the board. That being said, the Board of Education was elected by the community and took an oath, among other things, to assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. By indefinitely taking away my children's choice for a hybrid learning environment, it is evident that the administration and the Board of Education is failing our kids. There is no hope in any message you are sending to the children. You are not upholding your duties as elected to do so. My kids have sacrificed enough. My kids deserve better. My kids deserve a choice. I respectfully request that the board exercise their discretionary authority and call a special vote to seek a return to hybrid learning plan. For the well-being of our children, we must come together to get our kids back in the class. Enough is enough. Thank you, Nancy Thompson. And we have a third comment from Michelle Bate. Dear members of the school board, I ask you please allow our children to have the choice to return in-person learning at school. Please have the courage to reopen our schools and keep them open as some of our neighboring towns have done. As essential workers have been courageously working during this pandemic, students and teachers should also be courageously learning in person. We appreciate all of the administration's and teachers' efforts in this matter. Schools are fundamental to child and adolescent development and well-being and, oh, this is a quote, okay? So I'll begin again. It says, "Schools are fundamental to child and adolescent development and well-being and provide our children and adolescents with academic instruction, social and emotional skills, safety, reliable nutrition, physical, speech, mental health therapy, and opportunities for physical activity, among other benefits." With the above principles in mind, the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. The importance of in-person learning is well documented, and there is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures in the spring of 2020. That's from the American Academy of Pediatrics in 2020. That is sincere, uh, this is from Michelle Bate. So thank you for your comments. We will go on to the finance report. I'm sorry, I, I, yeah, can you say? I'd like to, can I speak? I hope it's on behalf of all of us. Uh, if you disagree with anything I say, then chime in and say, Tom, I'm up with you all. The first thing I'd like to express to the public that is here and those who are watching is that we all share these exact concerns, and we share these same frustrations. And, um, we, all of us who are here, and Jerry and Steve at home, all have children currently in these schools. Kathy's children went to these schools. Kathy dedicated much of her career to these schools, and she knows probably as well as anyone on this board the importance of a child being in a school, learning. We, we know this, and we are experiencing it too. But we also, like, if I had my way, my kids would be in school. I think all of us would.
I agree.
And if, and if I didn't have the responsibility that we have, I most likely would be one of these people talking to us. And while I'm going to say I don't expect anyone to agree with you, but I just hope you, like, understand where these decisions are coming from. And I'm going to go back to you, the first thing you do when you join or become part of a school board is you take an oath. And the first thing I have to oath is you have to follow the laws of the land. So you have to follow the U.S. Constitution. You have to follow the Illinois Constitution. You have to follow the laws of Illinois. And then the second thing, the second thing in that oath is this. "I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets." That's the second thing we have to say. First and foremost in our minds is the safety and well-being of our kids, the safety and well-being of our staff, all those factors in these decisions. Then comes the financial wellbeing of our school district. And I said this to many people. Do you want us to spend money on litigation, or do you want us to spend money on education? I personally prefer to spend the limited capital we have on educating our kids the best that we can during this pandemic. A thing that we can't lose sight of is we're in the middle of a pandemic. Now, people have different views on the severity of it, but that is influencing all the decisions we have to make. So things that will come out later tonight, the things that I want to try to be succinct about, is that we are in constant contact with the open door. We also have talked to our insurance carriers, and it's not as easy as just saying, we want them to go back. And please keep in mind, what I'm saying isn't to ignore the safety and well-being of our kids. It isn't to ignore the value of education, which we appreciate, but what I'm going to talk about is protecting the district's assets. It's the first thing we have to take an oath to after we say we'll follow the laws of the land. So we are told we have to follow guidelines from reputable health experts. That's the CDC, that's the only department of health, that is the McHenry County Department of Health. We gave Dr. Johnson the charge to represent us, our school district, with all the other superintendents in McHenry County, to work with the McHenry Department of Health to develop metrics. Yet we were followed and determined if we can be in full-on school, if we can be in hybrid, or if we can be in remote. So we worked, we didn't have these things shoved down our throat, we were represented there. We need this guidance in order to be in compliance with the insurance that we're paying for. And we are often, I know we are asked, well, why can this district do that? Why can this district do that? And I, and I say this with all the respect, I cannot speak for other school districts only. I can't. I can't speak for neighboring districts that are still in. I can't speak for the Catholic high school that is still in. I don't represent them. But I do know with full confidence, if I was on those boards, knowing what I know on this board, I would make the same decision. So how do we arrive at that decision? If we don't follow these rules or these metrics, I said, excuse me, straight rules, we don't follow these metrics, we aren't in compliance with our liability or toward immunity. And that makes our district extremely exposed to litigation. Right now it does, and in the future. And the future worries us in many cases more than the present. Uh, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, but I just, if a child gets sick this year, we have no idea what can happen to that child three years from now, or five years from now, or seven years from now. But we do know, if we ignore the health department's guidance and these metrics and say, let's just go back to school, there is a marker. And if that child gets sick during this time, and something happens five years from now, they will come back and our district is exposed. We have to follow these metrics. We have to. Do we like it? No. Like, we know, we want our kids in school, just like you all do. We want them there. We know it's better. We know they learn more. They learn from kids next to them. We understand all that. We're experiencing the same hardships at home. This is it. We're not a they. We are, we are you, okay? On the same note, if we choose to ignore that, who's going to insure us in the future? And to be insured, we're going to have to go on some high-risk rule. That is not protecting the assets of District 12. Uh, a thing that often comes up is, oh, just have me sign a waiver. I'll sign a waiver. I wish the waiver was worth its weight in gold. It's not. Um, it's not foolproof. And in addition to getting the waiver for your child, we're going to have to get a waiver from everyone, from the guy mowing the lawn and plowing the snow, to Dr. Johnson, everyone in between to run this school. And I don't think that is going to work. I don't think people are going to waive their rights to go into a place of work that is not safe. They're not going to say, ah, don't worry about it. Some may, but I don't think we're going to get the numbers that we need to run this school. So we, we can't do that. Then there's another issue that weighs on all of us. We've been talking about this since spring. How do you staff a building if several teachers are out? If my daughter's fifth grade teacher is out with COVID, and she is in terrible shape, and let's just say she beats it in two weeks, that's 10 instructional days, my daughter doesn't have a fifth grade teacher. And the knowledge and expertise that her teacher has cannot be replaced by a sub. And we're having a hard time getting subs, you guys. So now, we want to put a sub in there that has the same level of competence and mastery as my daughter's fifth grade teacher. It's not going to happen. So we have to factor that in, or if you go to a high school level. Typical high school teacher has probably 120 students today, 125? That's almost half of our school. If those, if we have two teachers out, if we have an English teacher and a Mathletes, almost half our school will not have their teacher, but let's just say for this, for 10, 10 days. That's not good educational policy. What I do know, and we experienced it, is we can get our kids into school safely. We did it for a week. We've done it. And Dr. Johnson and his administrators worked tirelessly to put us in that position, and it is deeply appreciated. We know we can do it. We just need everyone to work together, everyone to do what we can to drive down these numbers so we can get our kids in school, where we know all the things that comes with being here in person can be delivered to them. And we know when they return, they'll be greeted by teachers that most likely are even more excited than the kids are. So I hope, I didn't say any guys didn't want them, if I did say certain things, but...
I know, I appreciate you speaking up on it and very kind of sharing conversations that we've had over the course of the last few months.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
I think unfortunately, a lot of the people who don't attend board meetings in the past, they've become a little bit more popular lately, and maybe they weren't privy to this kind of information because they weren't attending before. So to hear this out loud, and we haven't really discussed any of this over the last handful of board meetings, maybe this will come across a little bit louder to our community to know that we're not just sitting here, like somebody had said earlier, with a lack of urgency. Believe me, there is urgency in every single one of these seats here to get everybody back. And once the metrics allow us to believe me, we will be.
And that's, you can't run, if the metric finds, we all go back. We don't have to go pre-K, K, and grad week and all. That was done to make sure we could do it well. So, yeah, just to add to your saying, I mean, we go back, we're going back.
Absolutely.
As soon as we can.
And thank you for what you said, Tom. That means a lot.
And sorry to steal your thunder, Andy.
No problem. Okay, good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about my personal personnel and our job a little bit about last year. Starting off the line, it's important to be our act by following the national law. Our I business group is like your personnel coming in again this year. If you guys recall, we did lots of the last three, right around March 20th. Um, we didn't only get one hit for that, and so we have a twenty-one theater sale again. This is our wedding theater with them. Um, and actually, we found a lot of positive meaning in the work that is being opened this way. Um, and effectively, each other, each area, each time they came out. So one year, we were, we started managing the town. And now, another year, we're still really working on people. Um, and then, uh, uh, by having received more and having to be able, every year, we go to all of our friends and our wives, and now we can perform a single line. Um, but for this year, uh, we didn't have any funding for our line. We took this in mind. So the findings are, that's saying that it's a misstatement of something. So potentially, uh, we have overstated our spending for our federal grants, uh, and misstated some things in terms of our financial level. Um, and that, for some reason, our documents in terms of our finances completed monthly, our I-wash was coming in, and it's not taking them. So we have no findings, no way. We did have one prompt on our management letter, and the management letter is mainly internal, uh, by the way, it's not a surprise to the public, but it's important for you guys to know. Um, like I said, it's simply just a technical malice for us. And there are recommendations here, which is if we have a little bit of our key privacy, there are one that we found that did not affect us. And no excuse, but for the free here, um, we did go back and had located a couple, we were able to find almost one. We do, um, have a double system of fellow pool for all of our, all of our pregnant and some other, whether that's a senior or not. Um, we do have closer to our ways. We did inform that, that obviously, for some reason, we don't have it for people, we will refer that power. So we will have our, come again. Again, that is an internal thing that's not for that, um, not for the public. Uh, and the main factor is the act by Tony A. R. in higher court, uh, as well as getting a review. Uh, for, uh, and we'll buy it. You guys know that we are a five-year, not a full basis. So now, to confirm you, the, uh, A. S. R. about firm force, all of outstanding revenue being to the district in terms of state funding, contract expenses, uh, or any local things. We don't have a, a little bit of state funding that's gotten permitted at twenty-five levels. Uh, some of like, uh, crystal robbery, we've got a few of that. And then for this year, specifically, we have a group of our contract expenses that were still outstanding in the U.S. to confirm you. Uh, with that, uh, on a full basis, we showed an improvement, uh, from all fund expenses, uh, I'm sorry, from all funds by 1.9 million dollars, which is awesome, but doesn't necessarily true picture of a real one, because of the backfill. Um, also, the main, the fact is, uh, is that I have a wonderful process where anyone can, there's some pretty good news with this. So what you recall, our financial report designation is a summary of five categories. The first is the place of our fund yield scrubbing ratio. Uh, over the years, we've gone from one to three in this category, uh, maximum amount in these categories is a four. So currently, our fund yield scrubbing ratio, we're at 22.49 percent, places instead of three in this category. So which category four, being greater or equal to 25 percent, so we're lost. Uh, the second category are our special scrubbing ratio. And if you recall from last year, we moved down from a four to a three in this category because of the back end of these our lessons, and we actually have to pull down a little bit in that year. So a look is always better than trying, but really, we just, um, just bring down the sum. So we moved down to three. This year, we moved up to a four, so we can show them that area. The third category are base tax after hand, and this is exciting, because we actually moved up for the first time in this category from a two to a three. Uh, and we've got four hundred base tax on hand as we confirm you. Uh, so we moved to category three, that's about at least ninety. We won't do the next category 100 and eighty for a while, but we're definitely moving in that direction. And then four, we, we've had this at over the last, for, for long time, I mean, we're getting down, um, the percentage of our borrowing. Even though we borrow, we're not using the patient marks, we always pay off for the period. So, um, we've been able to basically see a four in this category. The last category, um, is the percentage of long-term debt. And if you remember, we were fully, you're on, today, within this, um, now we're at 1.1 percent. So we moved to category two, um, less than we presented at least 25, so we're all pretty close in this category to me. So the good news here is we moved from early market to low E to financial revenue of 3.25, which is the second highest category for financial help in this school district in the long. So overall, I think pretty good. I'm pretty good, you guys, on my end. And so we've been moving forward. And if we're able to move the tax category in the next couple of years, then we'll be able to make it into financial recognition back. So we're pretty hopeful that that happens soon. So just some good news to share. Any questions about the act?
That's, I mean, not too long, but we're into watching this, so, um, good work.
Okay, and so for act by twenty state and local funding, I just want to bring up a couple things we talked about earlier. Funding of the act is being funded and still a schedule on the 10th of the 20th of the month. Our money in the category of those act by, I'm sorry, the act by 21, can I have that? Um, the years are running to the right of the calendar, act by 21 coming. The money in the category of those the first quarter of act by 21, having after, uh, for the first time in five years, that would be in October, typically, we don't see the control of December. Um, so for that, that's, and that's new, so we received 284,000 in the category of those in October. For our private tax letting, uh, that is typically due by September, which is going to send into February, um, total, uh, nineteen money is 22.89, and that is received 22.1, which in October, we need to collect it at 688,000. So we've moved a little bit, um, as of recent, we've had about 63,000 in this category, which leads to another 75,000. So everything will get a little bit more, um, and we're hoping that by the time we get that through, we're, over here, it's pretty on this. Okay, so moving forward to factual, seeing that we see tax, I'll be just kind of, just kind of, we start talking about, we think a little more enough. Um, at our next meeting, we need to adapt the tender, but we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. Why is that so, given that I care for from last year, we moved to the review of the draft of the in-residency, which we are no longer reading, um, because we more than have to leave for taxes, rather than, because we are going to write in our review for that, which is awesome. But we will not be putting in a reservation in December. So we will be adapting. So we will be adopting our money. In January, uh, we're going to be bringing some financial projections, so we need to hold these, be careful with more amounts of demand. And men have planned what we've been over the last couple of years. At least, so we're going to do, and we have some projections to excel in services of the same volume. Um, we'll have some further discussions on borrowing. And wishful thinking, we wouldn't have to be short-styled, I'll talk to you guys in the whole day. Um, in another time, I'll see, I might have a deal, a natural, a long conservative, but wishful thinking, we're pushing it to the end. After we go through the table, but prior to the main, uh, of the act. So in terms of cash flow, um, back in act seventeen, if you look at this number this regular. Our cash flow point was negative five point eight million dollars. So when we had that, we borrowed six million, we screwed by, we sure we had enough to go back to. Uh, PMA typically record thirty, um, easily one million dollars just to be able to save tax. One, we can have a little close inside that, just kind of, it's out, I feel like we can do a little better. But I don't think this is the year for doing that, so we're going to be pretty conservative on the estimates. Um, last year's cash flow was only ninety point six million, we did borrow three million last year, so we might not be able to do a little better, and probably will. Again, that one is time to be getting this slightly, uh, whatever you want, um, this progress that we can get a little bit of. And this year, for us, we have a consumer rate basis, a negative one point two million. And that is pretty much the case in my mind. To equate that, uh, if we were to assume for the negative one point two million, we would need to borrow the eighty, the one point four, the eight point eight payroll, and we would issue two point three million to tax consideration mark. Again, this is a conservative estimate, and hopeful that I can do better, and I will, will push it out to May, but I try to present a side project, making it purposeful to be right there. Of course, monitor that with the next couple of months, see all our billables to be in the state. Um, and with that, the graduate tax did not pass, we know that there's conversations in state about the use of reduction miserably this year. So we are trying to give it a idea, we have to watch on that, uh, this, and ensure that we are going to track what we want to do. Any questions on that? Moving forward to the tax letting, um, hopefully, this year's letting is going to be a little better. Uh, when we were projecting our, this year, we did, um, actually for a one million dollar new rule placeholder, um, with one million dollars in the, asking from, it's a stock, it's a different one point six million. Pretty much, we've done it the past couple of years, but actually, it's one point five three, we did it for that, it's one point five even. Um, so ultimately, we don't see that there's going to be a lot of movement with this. Um, the E A B has that up, which is awesome, so we are three hundred ninety seven million last year, now we're four hundred fifteen million. So as you can see, the ultimate, we could see that, obviously, um, that's been, that's been well, that's right along with that. The C P I, consumer price debt, is set on prior December, C P I, the last December is twenty three. That's going to withhold our last four coming in December. Um, but that is basically the driving factor to what our tax level is going to be. So when we reach that, we're really far from the C P I. We're assuming a total tax increase of two point six nine percent. Over the past couple of years, we've run pretty close to that. Uh, and we're letting up around, we're letting exactly five percent of tax funding, which will be brought up as soon before. So I guess we're looking for any comment from the board, if they want to go with that five percent, or if we're looking to change it up, um, we would have to the, uh, start with the current board meeting.
Could you just remind people how, so if we say ask for five, but the actual was four, we only did four. But could you explain that better than I just did?
Yes, so pretty much the way that it works is, uh, the consumer price debt, right now, is two point three percent, is the driving factor. Only thing that's going to change that is the growth. And a capture of that growth is basically to say, hey, these new properties are coming out to the, out to the role, which is a new, we need to build that sound too. And after, so ultimately, it's not two point six nine for everybody, or five percent for everybody, or whatever it might be. It's a gap or a fashion that's growth only, and pretty much the right factor is two point three percent of the income. So there are little fluctuations based on that anymore, but really, the C P I is the main number.
So with that in mind, I don't, I don't, we need to ask for five, I don't, we're not going to be five, there's not that much new growth.
I think, I think we've got a little bit of, you guys already know, I'm putting hinders twenty five percent, or twenty percent, or twelve percent. It's even quite a ride down, because things have been stable, we know what we're expecting. And the other piece of it is that it does not, it's got so good at saying, here's the numbers, we've got it, it used to be that. It used to be a little bit of a shot of the bar, or now it's like, this is the event we want, unless there's something that changes up, and sometimes, maybe they have a tax action, or somebody's not going to come through, or whatever it may be, this is pretty unlikely.
And those things would not be a drastic swing, so we can come down to five percent.
Absolutely. So in terms of this, this would be originally, um, we have a big missing property of one million dollars. The addition of five hundred ninety four thousand, um, well, I'm sorry, rather than just thirty thousand dollars, we're running for twenty million dollars. So and if I see them exactly, we'll do a percent with about ten to maybe two hundred, or a couple hundred, so a couple of percent. Um, so there are small fluctuations based on that.
So if you'd be fine with four, or four and a half, like, what, what would be a fair number, you guys?
I'd say it's more in the three, three and a half or something.
So if we set three and a half, would we have enough, would we be able to absorb new growth with three and a half?
Absolutely.
If we don't take three and a half, then we potentially lose any new growth?
If we go too low.
If we go too low.
Right now, it's two point six nine, if there's more growth, then you're at two point six nine, we could have done it, basically, probably. Um, so.
But even if we ask for three five, it's still probably won't be three five.
Correct.
It's mostly going to be lower, but if some crazy things happen, then.
Yes.
So then there's a billion boom.
Sorry, the last few years, we asked for five, we've got, we've moved to five, we've moved to six, and it's just made some unknown, we don't have the double now.
So Val, are you proposing three five?
I would be comfortable going down to three, but I don't know, I'll just.
I think I'd be comfortable.
You guys, you guys, Steve, a little bit, man? Uh, Val has suggested either three percent levy or three point five. Kathy just said.
Three five, just because we're, I don't know, it seems scary to go down two points, I mean, I don't know.
Kathy's saying three five would be more comfortable for her.
Especially for a two point six nine, two seven.
Gives you a little wiggle.
What's that?
Gives you a little wiggle.
A little extra wiggle. Not that it's going to happen, I mean, it's, you know, but it's just, if it's not there, then just lose it.
Can I ask you a question? In previous years, we've always gone five percent, okay, we're still at two point three three and two point five one, right?
Yes.
So what's different about this year, just back to your asking?
For me, I think we're seeing a trend, and like Andy had said, the numbers are getting to be more precise that we're getting, whereas in the past, it wasn't so.
There's not been a benefit to asking for five percent, like.
Things are so much more predictable, I think.
Kathy said things are more predictable, Jerry.
Is that because we're not seeing growth in the village as far as, um, as far as new, new houses being built? Is that why it's predictable?
Yeah.
Yeah, parts of it.
And what's predictable also in that, as I said, how we projected that for us, and we just got a little bit of a, a little bit of a.
Is word, Andy is standing, I can barely hear her, just, I'm just around you, I'm just out of, out of.
I'll hold the microphone better when you're coming out.
You, you just obviously muffled, that's all.
We're all wearing masks.
I have to worry about Jerry.
But I can hear, I can understand you, Dan and Dan.
Well, I'm running out of voice on the show.
I'll try to.
Poor Bill.
Can you hear me that now?
I think, Jerry, things have just improved over time, everything's become more efficient. And through data, things like that, the numbers are more specific now, so we're able to narrow it down from the twenty four percent days to the fifteen, to the five. Now we're able to really narrow it down to provide that opportunity to show the community that we're going to actually go less than we have in the past during this tough time, to go from five to three and a half, which is a, I think, a nice gesture as well for the town.
Okay. And obviously, if there's a ton of growth coming next year, we will, we just want to make sure we can catch new growth, because if we don't, we forever lose that.
That's correct. And if for some reason, something else comes up between now and December, between now and December, which I will leave in the background.
Do you hear that, Jerry, and Steve?
No.
If more things pop up between now and December, we could still make adjustments if necessary.
Okay.
So we're not looking for a motion.
No, this is just.
This is FYI, okay, this is.
This is important for this event. Okay, moving on to operations, uh, getting our, uh, other like.
All right, I don't want to talk, just revert back, so three and a half is where we'll come back at the next meeting with that, okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, so we just wanted to start talking a little bit about operations and restart. I'd like to start with regards to where we're at with the health data. Unfortunately, I wish I had better news, but if you see the news, you see the paper, I can certainly click on it if you want me to show the matrix, or just give you the numbers, doesn't matter. So right now, remember, we've got the, the, the first number that we'll talk about is the incidence rate. That's what, these are the four metrics that we go live, uh, or that, or the guidance from the McCaughrey County Health Department. The incidence rate should be somewhere around, to get to about fourteen, uh, with the matrix that we have asked to, you know, that we've worked together to be able to get schools open, and currently, it's at sixty. Um, it's on a steady trend up, and in the conversations that we had today with the health department, that trend is anticipated to continue, that they're not seeing the flattening of it, right now, that they're seeing things continue to increase. The next one is to deal with the positivity rate. Uh, as of today, the positivity rate for McCaughrey County is nineteen point five percent. Remember, the matrix have us, the, the county, and we have worked with, is somewhere between five and eight percent. Now, it's all of these, it's not just the positivity rate, I want to make that clear, uh, that it's, it's kind of a conjunction with everything. The COVID hospital admissions, that's now fluctuating, because now they're starting to see an increase in hospitalizations. Uh, we had a conversation today with the health department, and, uh, the hospitals in McCaughrey County are starting to see an increase of them. They're still at capacity, they wanted to stress that, uh, but they just said that they're relating that, um, they are seeing the increase. And the last one is the weekly count of new cases, and that is, uh, increasing, that's how they do it every Friday, uh, and that's still labeled as increasing. Uh, they anticipate that that will continue to show increasing, just with the early data that they see, uh, at this point. Some of you have asked in regards to, can we drill down a little bit more locally, to be able to see what things look like a little bit more local in our zip code? So, um, Northwestern has a very nice site where you can drill down a little bit more locally. I wish I had better news, but actually, our zip code is much worse than the county. Uh, our zip code is currently at twenty eight point six eight percent positivity rate. Um, and it has gone up dramatically over the last six days. The incidence rate, if you just look at the local data, is about a hundred and twenty four, hundred and twenty four point five. Um, so unfortunately, the part of the reopening that we have, or the, the information that we got is, it's not, it doesn't look good. And unfortunately, the information from the health department, the conversation that we had today was that the data does not look like it's improving at all. You know we're in stage, in mitigation in the county. Health Department let us know that there's a potential, or likelihood, that we're going to get additional mitigation coming, because we're not easing at all, so there's a potential that additional mitigation, uh, could be coming. That may impact our next board meeting, just in FYI, if we have to reduce capacity down to ten, um, I will let you know, but we've got to get information on that. Um, is there any questions on that information? It's, uh, look, that's not what anybody wants, right? And our staff, remember when we were back at hybrid, I just want to make that point, when the staff was excited, we were back at hybrid, we were well within those metrics, right? That, that's what guided us to open, we were excited because we used those metrics, that's what guided us to open. We fell within them, we were in, while both were in good shape, and that's, that was good, so we're going to continue to, to work with those. Uh, currently, in cases here in the district, uh, we've got overall fourteen, um, fourteen cases. Uh, we've got five new ones, you see the letters that go out, um, we try and continue to keep those letters go out in our community. Um, and let me get the data on quarantining right now.
Can I, I should have asked this a moment ago, in McCaughrey County, if we meet all four of the metrics.
Yes.
Do we have to be, do they have to be met for a certain period of time in order to go back, or once they're met, we can return?
Once they're met, we can return.
Okay, thank you.
And we monitor, I mean, I, I, I can't stress enough, at four o'clock every day, or four fifteen, either Andy or somebody will, it's on my computer, that's pulled out, or it's on my phone, and we, it's monitored every single day, with the hope that it's going to start going the other direction. Um, so we monitor it literally every single day, and we talk to the health department twice a week.
Now, I'm not trying to be absurd.
Nope.
Um, so let's say Thursday, they're met.
Correct.
We say, all right, we're going back Friday. We turn around that quick, or we say, okay, they're met, we're going to come back Monday.
It'll take us a couple of days to get everything.
And then in the meantime, they bounce back up.
Oh, that's a challenge.
I mean, if they, if they bounce back up, then we have to say, oh, sorry?
There's criteria there that'll say how long they have to bounce back up for. So in other words, if they're met for a period of time, and the positivity rate goes from eight, let's say it goes to eight point five, okay? We're still okay to open, because that positivity rate has got to stay above eight percent for seven out of ten days. Okay? So it's got a, it's got a, it's a sustainable thing, it's not something where it can be up and down, up and down. So the same thing with the incidence rate, it's got to stay above fourteen for seven out of ten days in order to be able to flip.
In order to have to flip.
Correct, correct.
However, it doesn't have to maintain for us to go back for those, that same period.
Just we can go ahead and jump back.
Once it hits, and then obviously, on a daily basis, you're following it, I'm sure, just like every one of us are following on a daily basis, to watch when that trend starts going in the right direction.
Oh.
To say, hey, hey, we're getting close, we're getting close.
Correct.
So then everyone, top.
There's a couple of administrators that are up there, I'll tell you, that's the conversation that we have all the time. We've got to watch the data, when it starts to flip the other direction, at a good pace to go down, we've got to start rounding up, you know, so that's what we do. And the health department has been very upfront, they're like, we're going to tell you when it looks like it's going to really start to flip down. And they're going to keep, the, the twice a week phone calls are very helpful, because they're informing us what it looks like to be able to do that. So yes, that's exactly correct, and as soon as they start to flip, that's when we start to, and, and we're like, I think we're in pretty good shape. It's not an indefinite suspension, if I can address that. This is just a tentative pause because of this. And Tom, I would agree with you, we, we proved we can do it, we're pretty successful, I think, to be able to go back to it. So as soon as that stuff starts to flip down, we're going to start to plan to be able to come back, so. And that's when the information will start to flow from us, I would say, look, we noticed that the trends are going down, we're going to continue to monitor them, but are cautiously optimistic or whatever.
Because we'll have to send out notifications to the families, in order to start getting prepared for that type of stuff.
Correct.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, uh, real quick, uh, we currently have a total of twenty people, uh, that are currently in quarantine or isolated as of today. I know the number on the slide, I think it said forty four, but we've had, uh, several that were able to drop off last year because they met their time period or their quarter, whatever you want to call that, so.
Now, just, staff is required to tell us.
Correct. Yep.
Families aren't.
Families are.
We appreciate that they do.
Families are not required to tell us, but we do really appreciate the fact that they do tell us, so that way, that's very helpful information for us. Families are not required to tell us, but we do really appreciate the fact that they do tell us, so that way, that's very helpful information for us.
Correct. So if we're in school, we need families to tell us.
Well, if we're in school, we definitely do, yeah. So, and just as an FYI for the board, at this point in time, due to the, due to the spread of the disease right now, to put it gently, I'm, I'm concerned about making sure we keep our staff healthy to continue to keep everybody teaching, at least remotely right now, right? That's, we've had conversations with teachers to make sure, and, and all of our staff, it says, please stay healthy, be safe, so that way we can continue to teach remotely because of how rapid it is in our community right now, and how the community spread is pretty bad right now, according to McCaughrey County Health Department. So, uh, so I think that's just important to note, that that's a real struggle. Any questions on the data or anything along that line?
Okay, as Tom talked about a little bit earlier, in terms of liability, can you, can you want to explain that for you and then talk to us?
Real quick, Dan, I'm going to just, the, sorry. I think this is a really important thing for the board and everybody to be able to understand is, as we go down this path, and once the metrics came out and those recommendations came out, that's really where this kind of rolls to the surface for a lot of, for a lot of districts, is the importance of that because of the tort immunity, really where we're going to focus our attention, that Andy's going to talk about. So as that came out, that really guides school districts in this area, so go ahead, Dan, thank you.
Can somebody maybe give a, a layman's term of tort immunity, maybe for everyone listening at home?
She's going to do right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's start first with our liability insurance. Under this liability, in terms of classes, our licensed liability insurance policy, they're part of the court. Under that, school board members and superintendents are named in charter parties, under which our school board legal and well-organized, legally covered. So, uh, the life preservation seems for you guys in general, or individuals of our, of our, uh, school district, unless for some reason there's broad meaning in terms of, you're breaking the law, a non-holbal, a crime, or things like that, you're, you're covered in general. However, and the basic whole ways, in general, across the board, there are almost unlikely chances to find it, even if you find one that would cover it, any sort of organic debt is not covered. And if they were covered, the drug industry, the property hand, wouldn't, that, that is from how we get them. So talking hard to the flip is that if there's something that you find, assuming that probably ends up. So.
Talking with who?
Uh, our liability insurance cover, cover all. So in the little school.
I'm sorry, I thought you said cliff, like some friend. Let me know who Cliff is.
All right, so now with the tort immunity, so obviously, typically, we're covered in the district, typically, U.S. Republicans and charter parties, typically, all of that, although if I come to work, a man and a child is in their own, well, it is different, right? However, under the Illinois School Code and the tort immunity act, it would write for a greater community under the tort immunity act that states that members of the board, superintendent, and no accidents may assume on the cap of the district may only be liable for injuries caused by willful and wanting kind of, or by showing some conscious disregard for the safety of others for their property. So in other words, inherently, you're covered by the community through the state of Illinois and through the Illinois School Code. If for some reason you are disregarding the safety and with the guidance that are put in place for you, you bring tort immunity. So you would report on to the district, we basically believe the rights and cover under the board.
The term, the term willful and want is very important, as well as, so add to it that it's called a reckless disregard for danger. So the both of those combinations of two, through our, our, through our attorneys have had, those are the big terms that, if you disregard that stuff, disregard that guidance, you're willfully and wantonly showing a disregard, and you're reckless, and that's giving up tort.
And I, my understanding of tort, and you guys correct me, is if you don't have tort, and business owners know this, you, you're no longer protected from damage awards and assessments of liability, you're exposed, and you don't have protection. So that's why this is so important, our district has tort immunity now, and complying with the metrics, because if we aren't, then we're exposed to all of that. We have no one backing us up with any dollars, it's just the state.
So we're going down very specifically. Number one.
Say that again.
I said, we're going down very specifically, so in this course, we'll see a law that would not to the school board, to the school district. Number one, a liability that is not going to pass up, here, that's not going to happen, maybe people have nothing to do with that school at all. If it's in regard to COVID and injury, or something that happens for some unsavages. The inherent ability of tort is the fact that if we have to go, it is some sort of, we will, setting a rhetoric and any sort of battle completely speaking, we will likely have to throw out because of that, the main decisions that are addressing yourself of our family, unless we decide to willfully and wantonly ignore them. So no matter what, if the law can't protect you, you go to the school district, the school board, you don't have to fight it. It's just that tort will balance up to make sure that you don't have to, without any disregard.
Right, tort will allow to, the attorney will tell you that if tort will allow to in the court, and they'll go, well, no, you're covered under tort because you, because of what you did, or you're not covered under tort because of what you didn't do. And that's where it's pretty clunk and dry as it relates to willful and want mis.
By not following.
By not following.
The metrics.
The metrics.
Set by the McCaughrey County Health Department.
Right. And going back to the common thing that you brought up about the waiver, Tom's exactly right. There's no waiver in the world that can be writ right now because of the unknowns of COVID, according to, to the attorney that we've talked to. And even if you did hypothetically get one, you'd have to have every, just up there on the, you'd have to have every family sign it, but then you also have to have every employee sign it, basically signing that you're okay to come to work in an unsafe working environment, because you're not, you're not following what the health professional said. So.
An unsafe working environment according to the McCaughrey County Health Department?
Correct. So.
We're not the ones saying.
No.
No.
There's our thing, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
So I think it's just important for the board and everybody to be honest with you, to be able to understand that this is a significant impact on a school district in regards to a problem, if that's the case.
But the last thing that you said in line, I think it's important for, this is a number for the school board, not that, I don't know what you're going to go off. And there's been conversations out with our communities of personal lawsuits against our school board, and not our school board, but other school board. And I think importantly, did take a little leaper to make sure that all of the children in the school board, you guys are, it says in the background, and doesn't write any part of it, although we all remember, which means that, we got to back, you know, this is a school district, you can't do that on. We put you in a position to make decisions that are addressing issues with the school district, and if somebody would become personally towards you, then that's an opposite design. So that's an arguable in relation to these things, whatever, that is made up of the school. So I think it's important to mention that at all.
And I just want to reiterate one thing that Tom had mentioned in his opening part, that it's not just not. Legal throughout the state is more concerned about COVID in a year or two or three years because of the potential impact that the disease, because it's novel, unknown, that it could potentially have on somebody. And so it's, it's the potential that there could be losses two, three, four, five, six years down the road, as not necessarily tomorrow, if that makes sense.
Yeah, just want to talk to you a little bit later, or?
No, I think I'm okay now.
Okay.
Thank you, though, I think we can get everything.
Okay. Okay, time's up.
Is there any questions, or can I make this way down? Steve or Jerry, did you guys have any questions in regards to any of this stuff?
No, I do not. I'm good.
Thank you. I mean, it's not a fun thing to talk about, right? It's not, none of this is fun to talk about, but it's an important component to be able to talk about, and it's an important component to be able to communicate, so.
Remember the days we complained how we'd go on and have a construction, additions, bids?
Strives in the parking lot?
Yeah. Colors of carpeting, square, remember that?
Crown in the football field.
Well, I guess it's going to, I might have to follow up when I come on the radio show, well, that was our first time calling here, but, uh, I do like getting up in athletics, and I know after everything that we just talked about, uh, the winter season that has just been approved, has been approved by the IDPH and the oil sports policy with dance cheer, and boys and girls bowling due to their low risk. As you know, the battle with basketball that is ensuing, it's kind of brought out some of that, uh, that documentation that Andy just talked about with, uh, tort liability and things like that. So outside of that, you know, from an athletic standpoint, I'm confident moving forward with dance, bowling, cheer, that, uh, you know, like we have been running since June with our summer camps, and then a very successful fall season, because most of you would agree that, uh, from our athletic department, I've talked to Mr. Sheldon, pretty confident that with our current protocols and guidelines, that we can safely operate those sports currently under the guidelines and protocols that we have, online, IDPH, ISD, all sports policy. So a, as we all know, it's a fluid situation, uh, as Dr. Johnson spoke about in terms of cases and everything else like that. You know, we understand that this isn't guaranteed, but where we're at, like I said, I'm confident we can run it safely, to an extent where we can put people in the most, the most successful position to succeed, but we also know that we're not a unit, as you, um, again, whereas other challenges being inside, like I said, everything we've done up to this point, our track record is kind of proven, we've been able to do that, do it successfully, and, uh, we can see this in different areas.
Thank you. Okay.
That's good, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's bad for a first time caller, yeah. Isn't only but a goodie, how about some park rock, I guess, talking about that? Yeah, that's, that's nice to be able to talk about, but, Dan.
Yeah, well, same, I think around that, but, um, I mean, maybe with our property, our use of the entire number, uh, we can see, again, I talked a lot about different options, it's all we have to do. Uh, we can see what those back remarks mean, well, literally, I don't want to, I don't want to, but we are going to look into things now. Um, so we would like to, in this term, go out to the front of the show for your term, is about a lot of severe coronavirus, uh, COVID attacks, and COVID. And a lot of more of the research that we have to do, um, that these are, so, uh, that's, that's a good move. Um, but like I said, there's always going to be some things that will come out of all of this other uses for that. Uh, the timeline would be, unfortunately, I have four used to try, so we're just waiting for the latest at this time. Uh, we've released it just after the COVID pandemic, we're waiting, it wasn't very quick, but we had a critical over the summer. But like I said, we're just waiting for it to come back. Uh, we could go set the game really tough on that too. So, um, if you guys are okay with that, we can sort of come down uh, at this time of the evening. Almost there, that's right. Um, one thing I wanted to bring you to see on a scale is we did have to release some commercial stores. Uh, this is for the product, for products over physically within our classrooms always, that's anywhere with the commandments. Uh, we cleared out hundreds of desk tables, chairs, shelves, and the light, and if you're designing any of our materials or um, other areas, you can see how stuck L.A.'s were, and you just don't have a choice or you deserve it. Um, so after lots of searching, uh, we looked at who helps, we looked at our community, whether it's making buildings that we find, we found for percent, we did find that two thousand three hundred of states which are free ones. Uh, and we listed two thousand, three thousand a month, it would use a month a month each. So as soon as we are done with it, we clear up that, so um, in fact, we didn't have a form of choice, we were looking for that instead of that. But we had no idea what we were expecting at the place, so all of that worked pretty well. Um, now, we're ready, we don't want this many, we're kind of in the process of these times. Um, and I will try to add that to the months if we're able to move forward if that doesn't work. So I'm pleased to be on that, but that was very helpful.
I thought Dan built a new ship.
The top part is full now, so I gotta just.
I know, it's really a great garage, right? All right, last thing, and this is, this came out of our in-house, so we just want to bring it up for everyone. Remember, we use construction, uh, meaning that I've got a need for a designated person to support them in the time of help to find their families. So originally, when we started, we had a few, um, COVID positive cases. We handed over to the health department to wait, you know, to handle everything. Again, um, but they requested that we now kind of start the process. We have a lot of relationships with our family, we think that they'll respond to us, they think that they'll respond to us. And that time, everything is ours, it does. So if I get into that, I guess I find a number of people, just that the community is not at work, it can really, really take a lot of time. Uh, right now, our supervisory level staff, in terms of going to the families, calling, yeah, of course, we have, it's just good. If we're back into a hybrid model and or a professional model, um, it is gonna, it's potentially a way to bridge the gap on the whole. Um, so obviously, something we know we can probably do next year, but why don't we just bring in certain things and do that?
We'll keep you posted on that, so Jimmy, going back to your point, when we start to see the data flip, at that point in time, we'll probably have to be in touch with you in the garbage of going down that path. It's just such a time-consuming process. Nurses now have time to be able to do that, especially when we're returning to hybrid and our building people certainly don't because they're out in the building to take care of kids, so uh, we'll keep you posted on that. We're also working with the health department, they may have more staff members, but they don't have time to be able to take care of that. We just wanted to throw this on your radar just in case it needed to happen, so.
Is this due to the McCaffrey County Department of Health not being able to handle it properly?
No, I think it has more to do, Jim, to be honest with you, it has more to do with the fact that a lot of people are not cooperating with the McCaffrey County Health Department. So they're asking the schools that have relationships with families to make the initial call and say, hey, you may get, or you're gonna get a call from the county health department, we're just giving you a heads up, please work with them. There's a lot of people in the county, and this is from them, and there's been newspaper articles about it, that are simply ignoring it. And they're not reporting it, or they're hanging up on them, and that type of thing, and so that is not helping the situation at all.
Was that today's paper, only fifty-three percent of the people cooperate?
It might have been, I didn't see that.
I didn't see it. Was it?
So who does the contact?
So we call them and say, hey, this, they're gonna call you and go through it, because they have a whole question here to go through. So they'll call them now.
Now, this sounds cruel here, but this is awful probably, but because of their failures, we have to pick up an additional expense?
No, it's not their failure at all. It's not their failure, it's the, to put it bluntly, it's the failure of the people that are on the other end of the phone not answering. Or that they're getting hung up on.
Well, that's, but then it's the McCaffrey County Department of Health's responsibility to find a different way. We don't just hang up the phone and say, oh, wow.
They've tried, they've gone, tried to go door to door, and they've tried all, but they just don't have time to be able to do that. So they're trying to be able to be the most efficient that they're doing, so they're reaching out to schools to be able to do that.
Right, if I'm hearing you right, Jim, and it's maybe I'm not, but I have the same thought, if, if they're asking us to help them, maybe they should help us pay for the cost.
Thank you.
You know, like if.
Took the words out of my mouth.
This is kind of like, well, it's like paying for something, you're like.
I mean, no offense, Sam, what you said also tells me that they're just not able to handle it properly, which then turns back to not putting an extra.
I don't think it has to do with them handling it properly, and it's not about, I think it's important to know, not every school district needs to handle, that needs to hire people. And I think that, that needs to, we run things as the board goes razor thin. Right, people don't have, there's not a lot of wiggle room. In some districts, there are some wiggle room, and they're able to be able to pick it up.
So you like move aside and the staff members?
Unfortunately, we have talked about it, and we, there's nobody in the district to be able to do that. And I'm not even sure that we need to do this, and it wouldn't be a permanent position, it'd be a part-time, it would be a short-term type of thing. But we just wanted to put that on your radar, that we just don't have the wiggle room and staff members to be able to do that. Now, I know school districts, I'm not gonna say these, my interest in it, I know school districts are like, yeah, we're just gonna cycle the system. We don't have that luxury, but we just, right, we just run things then.
Do you think it's us doing it internally, it would speed up the process of contacting?
I don't think so.
No? I know that one complaint that from someone I know that was on the contact list. It had been like, well past the forty-eight hours, because it went over the weekend.
Sure.
It had been, yeah, like four or five days, and they're like, well, if someone were to contact me right from school, like if you knew this on Thursday that my kid was exposed, I wouldn't have gone to grandma's over the weekend, or I'm gonna go onto this sporting event.
But the con, that, that initial contact coming from us, I don't think it's a problem. The contact tracing is the stuff that takes so much time. And this is a new, when, I have a personal experience with COVID from July, and even in July, they were shocked that my relatives talked to them, because nobody was talking to them.
Right. That's been really the challenge, and Jim, I totally understand what you're talking about, I do. And we just don't have the wiggle room, and I'm not saying we're gonna need to do it, right? I'm hoping when it comes down, we are, and that's something that our healthcare nurses know, all the staff will be like, I'm just throwing that out there on your radar just to kind of keep them on the thing, but.
I would just be one that would love to hear a lot more information before, I'm interested in hiring someone to help them. Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm all for trying to speed processes up and do all that, but not at the expense of our taxpayers uh, in our community to help the taxpaying body that also pays for the McCaffrey County Department of Health. And they're in fit, my words, what I appear to see right now, their inefficiencies to run, run it good. So a problem for whatever it is, but that's just my initial knee-jerk reaction.
They have a micro review around the, the statement that they're receiving rent on the hiring of people that's. So I'm having a distinction, it's like, I'm going until that's exhausted.
Absolutely.
There's more to see to this, I'm, I don't think this is a requirement.
No, 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 and actually, it's just, just throwing it out there just to kind of keep you in the loop, we're doing forever. No, we're not looking to hire anybody right now.
All right, I'm done. Okay. Thank you.
I love it, I appreciate it.
Layups is killing it, can't stand it up and walk around.
Sit your chair over there. You're in timeout then.
There's a couple hundred other chairs.
I know. You're not gonna sit up top, we sit over here.
You know the social distance.
Yeah.
See, I can go play the drum, there's some drums on this.
People won't bother you, maybe I just go build some stuff with the air compressor in the back?
No, it can blend together.
Or do a little walking music for Terry?
No, yeah.
Just a little commercial break.
All right, I'll be quick. Uh, remote learning update, uh, I know everybody hears the downside of remote learning, but I do wanna just touch base there. Our students, who actually are flourishing in remote learning, we do want you guys to know that that is happening in our district too. Uh, a lot of kids that struggle with social anxiety, um, are actually doing really well doing remote learning at home. Um, some of the stressors that are affecting them, or the competing, or anything's turned in, is, it's kind of taken off their place. Uh, so there are, there are students in our district that are doing a lot of remote learning, so just know that too. Um, what are we doing to remote kids? Uh, a lot of the teachers are utilizing that time at the end of the day to work one-on-one with kids or in small group, even though we have, uh, study halls somewhere, those are a little bit larger, so at the end of the day, our more uh, kind of reteaching opportunities, uh, finishing up some tests, maybe going over, doing some combinations, uh, such as answering globally for two teachers, uh, so kind of using that time that way with kids to help them. Uh, in the classroom, our team teachers and our teaching assistants are actually moving kids into breakout rooms, reteaching concepts that way, answering questions that way, so the classes still go on, but the kids are not moving, uh, the class isn't moving faster than what the students can handle. Uh, so we're doing things that way as well. Um, Terry and I spend a lot of time together socially distant, uh, looking at different interventions we can purchase, uh, specifically math and reading this year of reading. Uh, and then how can we establish some flexibility for all the intervention teachers and related service teachers to kind of get into working with the kids during that school day? Um, PE department has been great this year, uh, since a lot of their, um, time can be done outside of the school hour, that's a time that they're allowing interventionists and related service personnel to kind of cool kids to get services. We're working together.
Very well.
Uh, teacher opportunities, again, teachers are kind of using that end of this, the school day time, uh, but we are utilizing our teaching assistants as well. So, uh, you know, several teaching assistants that have kind of a session set up, uh, either, you know, once a week with kids, twice a week with the same kids, kind of come together. Uh, as well as we started to use our remote planning days, um, while the teachers are planning, the teaching assistants are actually, um, set up. Depends on the building, uh, remote started at fifteen-minute increments, uh, and then high school is on the way up to one-hour increments. Uh, and students that were struggling academically were able to sign up, work with one-on-one with the teaching assistants. We had one parent tell us, if you ever do this again, I got her to sign up, don't, you don't need to call me, this was immensely helpful for her. Uh, so parents still listen to like that additional help. Uh, and then we have offered our teaching assistants, uh, to work days off, so marriage conference days. Uh, we have helped kids sign up, uh, so it's a little bit of additional paid our teaching assistants to continue working with some of the academically struggling students, touching them up on their work, and teaching things like that. Um, offered again as our group's idea for remote planning days and conference days that teaching assistants are not.
How is that information sent to like family, like how are the kids at home?
So right now, uh, I think we had about less than a week, the first time we tried to set this up, I asked Dan on the end of the day, and then following week, we had to kind of set things up. Uh, so I worked with my leadership committee, so I had one building leader reached, uh, and then they kind of reached out to the special ed teachers, like before students, we started that one. Uh, we then kind of spoke with Terry about Donna Greenwood, uh, the MTSS kids that are struggling, so kind of looking at kids we know struggle academically, that is when we reached out to our vice presidents there to say, do you have any kids that you know of? Uh, we know we have some these spots to fill as well, so to kind of do a random one, we probably would run out of spot here. Um, but then hopefully this obviously will get it out as well, uh, and then kind of get that going as far as who does need help. You know, the teachers kind of reached out to us as well, they know who's kind of struggling in their classroom, and once they know that we set stuff up, they'll send us in to the kids as well. Uh, we did purchase a new location of curriculum, it's called Next Up, it is a completely online curriculum. Um, we do have a couple of kids that are transition age, uh, and we're using this as well with, uh, the students in the high school ops for them. Uh, so there's various video lessons, they cover things such as job evaluation, or first base learning experiences, all that, things like that. Uh, the lessons are short, they take two to thirty minutes, but then there's resources and assessments that follow. Uh, as well as resources for panels, and so, you know, how can they help their children be successful off the job? It's not a new thing, um, which of course is our professional development too. Uh, so there's webinars and things like that, this app is working, so we have Tom Weber, Jill Lippman, our transition coordinator, and our young developers, well, and the co- and that's the else teacher at the high school, all kind of doing professional development on that curriculum. Donna Greenwood, we've got a number of students that are high-ends for communication devices, uh, so we can do so. Professional development, um, as far as how to use that as a communication device. Uh, and then Terry and I are again, PD topics in the engineering role, UDL, so universal design of learning, we need that interventions, things like that, we're constantly trying to give each other topics of need. And we already have our dates set in January, as far as other assistance for students we're looking at. So after-school opportunities, um, and then moving into summer. As well as, um, kind of taking a look at the teaching assistants, and how to kind of redesign their job, uh, and getting a little bit more into, uh, doing some reading interventions with kids, a little fifteen, twenty minutes of things on a daily basis, but hopefully potentially close the gap, so maybe some reading scores. Any questions?
Thanks, Fran.
Thank you. All right, so today. Um, I kind of wanted to, I know last time I talked a little bit about preliminary data, I hadn't had enough time to analyze it. Obviously, look at your work packet, I had some time. So it's a comprehensive overview of our college district data, just to show you again what was valid, what we think was, you know, not reliable, and where we're gonna move forward with all that data. So I did get that documented, the work packet for you guys, um, but I just want to emphasize why the outset, steps are outlined again, fluid. We're getting, as we get more data, things change as our situation changes, steps may change, and this flip maybe back to hybrid eventually, or, or back to hold on, uh, things have changed, just as the situation changes. So basically, again, it's in the, the detail is in the document, but, uh, just kind of want to give you a quick overview, this is kind of like the executive summary of that fall data, then the AIMS Web reading data really did show that we had students' grades, K three versus deficits. The math reading data was elevated, we will have to look at individual scores, which teachers are doing. They know, our teachers have been using the math data for a long time now, they know which scores are like, hmm, that's probably high, let's look at my classroom assessment, or let's look at the AIMS Web assessment, so they are kind of discriminating, kind of, they are discriminating between what they view as reliable and not reliable data. Great torn ties, those are typical learning loss, again, I look at, again, achievement versus growth. If our achievement distribution was pretty much where it had been for the past couple years, you could consider that to be pretty much reliable, there weren't these shifts right or left. Uh, that's why I also ran a growth data, which is, we're gonna take a looking, a look at, in the last little point indicates in general, there was more learning loss. You remember from the last presentation, we talked about the general trends that they predicted in learning loss? You were gonna see learning loss in reading, you're gonna see learning loss in math, you're gonna see more learning loss in math. Generally, that's what we saw, but we did see some reading loss.
Terry?
Yes.
How hard is it for teachers to make adjustments and those, those decisions when they really don't know their kids as well as they want to?
Well, I would like to ask them, I don't know if I could speak for them on that point, but I know that all the teachers that I have spoken to are, are doing it. I mean, they're looking at the data and trying to make adjustments, or they're looking at the data, doing some classroom instruction, and then talking to our interventionists that came to, what I think is my condition. Math, we just had the math data go on again, our kindergarten first and second grade data was, achievement shifted far to the right. Um, but again, we're working with our classroom assessments, and our interventionists have identified, um, a lot of students that need intervention. We'll talk more about that in a second. Um, math, math, for create, consuming general data, and, but our growth data indicate that we have high amounts of learning loss in the math, so really important. Sorry about that. So there's an overview, but what are we gonna do, what are the steps? So just kind of wanted to detail some of the steps that were taken, and what we're going to take, again, I'm not gonna go through all of the uh, steps that are outlined that were done, but we did start back in June with creating that curriculum instruction plan. We were reading the research that's out, uh, talking to another educational professional the other day, and I said, the one thing about all this research is that it's recent, because nothing that's out of date, all this stuff is coming out in twenty-twenty, and we know we still need more data, but at least we have something to go on. Uh, July twenty-twenty, we're already setting this up, and I know past the last meeting, you talked about how we consider it after-school, and I was like, I forgot I did this, and I bet in the grand, I had set aside some money for potential before-after-school extension programs, because that was one of the things that they said you might want to try. Uh, I did that out of Taiwan funds, we started holding curriculum work sessions again. Um, in August, again, we built up more curriculum work sessions, and our K five interventionists began to provide services to students. Again, September, we did our testing and our interventionists, these are reliable, the benchmarking data to, uh, and teacher recommendations to identify students needing our tier two services. In October, the one thing that we did that I want to point out is we actually purchased the AIMS Web math for just students in intervention. The AIMS Web math has really improved their benchmarking since the old version, very much improved. And, uh, we did benchmark to make this possible, especially at grade K two, after we purchased it. We purchased it right before the close of the fall window, so we had a tight time period for that. But we do plan on benchmarking those kids again in the winter. The advantage again to the AIMS Web Plus is that we can also progress, monitor those kids, and get data on those specific measures. Did purchase mother intervention, it's a lot more specifically, and in K two especially, we just established more flexibility when students are being pulled for interventions. So that's what we've done, what are we gonna do? Well, the first place, if you look at any of the research, it says you need to start with a tier one instruction. We're gonna continue to provide freshman development, like Fran talked about, we're kind of working together to go, what goes on that choice menu, which we offer the staff, um, as far as outside workshops, and then what is offered actually on the choice menu. Uh, we're gonna reiterate the expectations for integrating those skills, uh, into the classroom, we're gonna monitor that. Obviously, principals do that during classroom observations. Uh, I am gonna be attending a lot of meetings this year, data meetings, uh, MTSS meetings, SAT meetings, student assistance team, if you know what that means. Um, just to get a good sense of what's going on in classrooms, because I don't technically observe, and that's a lot of zoom wings. Um, but just to get a better sense of what's going on, and to kind of help any staff that are having issues. Um, we're also gonna review the training for grade state teachers on how to translate that benchmarking data. I went back from our last board meeting, our last town meeting, and others said, we had provided training on how to create that. So I'm gonna kind of revise that and put that back in the choice menu. So first, we're gonna get classroom instruction, but what I've really been working on is those two tier, tier two and tier three intervention strategies. Uh, and why do we increase number of students that we have that identify to need interventions? Again, we acquired some new interventions, just like Fran talked about, on Karen, we've had things like a slogan code, which is an ELA intervention, which has experienced great success in our EL program. So we're kind of bringing that over into, um, the English language intervention program. Uh, we just purchased something called Dolly physics, because some students need that physics instruction. Like we literally just purchased, I think we sent the boxes over like last week. So getting some of those on the line. Dreambox is a math intervention, which is very cool, it's an adaptive engine. Uh, we've got kids on it already, in fact, a couple of interventions have told me they have kids on it that they can't get off of it. They're like, please, because it's very game-based. Um, the second thing we're gonna do, and this is very important just for future reference, is we're gonna revise the existing tier two, tier three recording system for future reference for kids. And for me, just so we can make better decisions for kids, I think we need a clearer system to show what have we done with the kids, and I think we do a good job of that, what, what interventions have kids experienced? I think what we need to do better, I was actually revealing the data and saying, is it working? Um, how often have we tried something, what have we tried, have we tried something different? It's gonna be very important, I think, in the next few years to have that heard, um, just for a lot of reasons. But the ultimate reason is we need that information to make good decisions, and everybody in the home, the teachers, the interventionists, the principals. I think that's not something that's very clear right now, but we need to fix, um, need to make other changes and adjustments, obviously, as we did. Set free, again, kind of doing this like first the classroom, then interventions during the school day. Now we're looking at outside of the school day, what can we do? We're gonna determine the name for before-after-school program, I think Fran, I talk about this like every couple of days, what would this look like? Uh, I have it in the document that you have, starting at the winter benchmarking, but we're probably gonna be planning this since like now. Uh, because we're looking at how many kids are actually intervention. Um, we need to determine the program needs, uh, we're gonna fund it through special ed and my Taiwan funds, which is supposed to be coordinated funding anyway. And really, the ultimate outcome of any such program is to improve reading and math skills, so students are equipped to successfully enter the next year of course. Uh, we're just looking for growth, I mean, enough growth, they are successful. Uh we're just looking for growth, I mean, enough growth that they are successful. By the way, the before-after-school program would be for students that are not responding to our MTSS interventions, the tier-two, within the school day. And step four, so now we're going outside the school day, now we're going outside the school year, implement some sort of summer school support program. And again, we're gonna determine the need and details pretty soon, um especially after winter benchmarking, but same outcome with it, where this program will be designed students that are still not showing improvement in an after-school program. And in the spring benchmarking, we'll pull anybody else. So again, I'd like to have some words specific, but again, we're still in the planning phase for some, but, and we need more data to plan for others. But we're basically planning on starting with tier-one instruction, what we do for students that need support within the school day, right outside the school day, and then what outside the school day. Any questions?
I have just a question about your tier-two, knowing that the number of students have grown substantially from last year. Our staff haven't been added to. How, the staff that you have, how do they accommodate? Our days are shorter.
The first thing that we're doing, since we just had this discussion, the first thing we're doing at K2, I know for a fact, is they're putting them in, and we have exit and, exit and entrance criteria in the MTSS YAB, because a lot of them are like on the order, they're basically saying, we'll give them some intervention for a certain amount of time, but if, they suspect a lot of them may exit after they get a little support, but all depends on how much support they're getting. So again, with math, we only have the data point. So we're looking at teacher recommendation, putting them in tier-two, and then we're looking at the winter or the fall intervention. So again, because we didn't have that other data point with the AIMS Web, that's why we're kind of like playing, but we were like, which kids are probably gonna exit? So, so maybe they might need just a couple weeks of extra. Yeah, you get Dreambox, you catch them up, and lay it up. Yeah. So we're looking at that. Um the other thing that we've been looking at in the research is we're actually, and that's why I'm gonna go to more meetings, the teachers are gonna, this needs to be explained. And then the spring, they didn't get the instruction, the first thing that should be tried is the instruction. If they're missing it, instead of like second grade, they missed something from first grade, instead of second grade, continuing to move on to second grade, they have to wrap that and know what skill they're missing, let's try the instruction. If they can get it, if they're being instructed, then there is no need for them to do it. So I think immediately kind of identify, I'm like, wait a minute, let's kind of wrap it and see if the instruction. Some of those, again, might be exited to the teacher going, we don't see a due issue here, use it your own. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Other business, we have right here on the 24th is our next board meeting. Line it up, that'll be a condensed agenda for that evening.
That'll be what?
Condensed agenda for that evening.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's Thanksgiving. That's Thanksgiving Tuesday. Any uh final things for the GoToTheOr?
No policy tonight, Jerry.
What'd you say?
No policies tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I need to motion to adjourn.
Say it.
One favor. All right. Hold on.
Thank you.
You all.
Good night, guys.
See you, Jerry.
Bye, Steve.